We called the planning board meeting to order. It's 6:30. So let's have a roll call. Chaz?
Chaz Sexton, Duranian.
Carol?
Carol Hofstis.
Carolyn?
Carolyn Bazikas.
Lori?
Laura Schifrin.
And Lance McNally. So we have five board members. 1.2, Chairman's Additions or Deletions. So, and Beth, you may have to help me here because I'm exhausted and I may screw up. But I think we have two additions to talk about that I am aware of. One, I'm going to call 3.9, and that is our budget that we need to discuss. That needs to be submitted on February the 5th, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
And then the next one, I'm going to call it 3.8, going into hex numbering, would be a ZBA mandatory referral?
Yes, exactly.
All right. Did I miss anything?
Nope. That's perfect.
Okay. With that, then, has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes on January the 7th? Is there any discussion on those minutes? If not, can I please have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 7th.
Second.
All right. How do you vote, Chaz?
Chaz Sexton, Duranian, yes.
How do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Carolyn, how do you vote?
I wasn't there, so.
You're abstaining?
Please.
Okay. Lori?
Yes.
And Lance votes yes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes on the January 11th meeting? And are there any questions?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of January 11th with the insertion of the one word that I sent over, and Beth knows where that is.
And for the board, what is that word?
That.
Okay.
It's a paragraph, and it just needs to be right, Beth?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's a relatively minor change.
Yeah, very minor change, does not change the minutes really at all.
Okay. And, you know, again, I'm tired. Did you make a motion to, was there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept January 11th's meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. And Chaz, how do you vote?
Chaz Sexton, Duranian, yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Same.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance is yes. All right. So we're not quite at 6:45. So I'm going to jump down to 3.1, Townsend Master Plan Committee Update. We did receive an email message from Kim, and Kim basically said that due to, I think, only having one of Hartley, and he can only monitor one TCAM meeting or one Zoom meeting at a time, the Master Plan Committee was unable to meet. And they have a meeting scheduled for, I think, the 27th. Beth, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Okay. Is there anything that I should add to that update?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. 3.2, and this is going to be you, Beth, I assume. 2020 Planning Board Chapter Annual Report?
Oh, yes. Is that what I have on there? Yeah, that hasn't been started yet.
Okay.
They don't know how the board wants that to be done. You want me to write a draft? Do you guys want, does anybody, does Chaz want to write a draft? I can provide him information. How do you want to do it?
In the past, I'm going to save Chaz here. In the past, we've always had the Planning Board Administrator put a draft together for the board to review.
I'm okay with that. I just did two for Housing Authority.
Do you have a problem with that, Beth?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I can.
Okay. And of course, guys, I think Jean told me, I don't know what your process is, but Jean would write a planning board annual report every quarter.
Oh, okay.
When it came to the end of the year, it was like, three quarters of it was done. Because sometimes it's very difficult to go back in the past.
Yes.
And, you know, the time that you have to spend reading minutes and agendas and stuff like that. So I just thought I would mention that.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Well, I'll prepare a draft, then, for the next meeting?
Yes, that would be great. All right. Townsend HMP MVP Draft Report Approval Process.
Okay. So I just, that's 1.4, right?
3.3.
I'm sorry, 3.3. Okay, yeah. 3.3. I'm still on one. So our draft HMP MVP, the Townsend's Draft Report, was approved by FEMA. So it's gone through all the approval processes with the state and federal. And at this point, it's, you know, I'd like to invite Adria from Westin and Sampson to come to the February 8th meeting and talk to the board about the next steps. It's going to involve, basically, your review of the report and offer, you know, any kind of edits. At this point, obviously, minor edits because it's been approved, but anything you see in there that just looks glaringly, you know, if there's anything in there that you see that just doesn't look right, you know, wording, that sort of thing, processes. So I'm going, I already have the report in the shared folder for you to pull.
Okay.
At any time. It is lengthy, as are the appendices. So you can start looking at that at your leisure. And then on the 8th, we'll have, if it's all right with the board, have Adria come in and help us with the presentation for the planning board, and then she'll help me. And then we will plan to get on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen, who are the final approver, you know, we will seek final approval from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any, does any board member have any questions? But that's really good news.
That is very good news.
It's excellent.
Yeah.
It's a great report.
Well, this is because of your work, Beth. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's been great.
All right. These next two will go pretty quick. 3.4, I have been flat out, and I'm still flat out. So I had, I have not had a chance to, what I wanted to do was to draft a bylaw amendment, which is probably timely because now I can read the document that Adam put out to see if I have any issues there. So I haven't done anything on 3.4, nor did I have a chance to do anything on 3.5. I've just been unfortunate, well, good news, bad news, flat out with work.
But I think it's good in the sense that with the new legislation, that might impact our zoning amendment that you're putting forth, right?
Yeah. Well, probably, you know, this is where sometimes, you know, doing nothing turns out to be good.
Right.
Rather than redoing something. All right. 3.6, in terms of Townsend Chapter 43D Feasibility Study?
Ah, the 43D study. Not a lot of movement on that. So the report is in the shared folder. I don't know if board members had a chance to review that report, but there, you know, there are a number of action items left to carry it to the end. So I think those probably should, you know, sort of be brought up and discussed. I don't know how you want to do that.
Lance, I can do that.
Oh, super.
Okay. All right. So I reviewed it because I was supposed to be the person who was going to get the signatures from the owners. However, I've not been get, I've, I've not, I thought that town administrator was going to do something and presented this to this Board of Selectmen, because I think the Board of Selectmen and the school, I think the Board of Selectmen have to sign off on Dudley Road, which, Chaz, I don't know if you got a chance to read their description of what they said about Dudley Road, which seems to be a lot more severe to me than what was actually done when you and Kevin Smith and Karen Chapman walked that property, where they're saying that almost, like, seven acres of it is in, wait, wait. Yeah, well, okay, habitat or rare species, whatever. They're saying that there are also wetlands on the property so that wetland permits may be required. I mean, they say a lot of may and you should, or you can, but nothing is definitive. It's all very, very loose. So I know that the owner of 222 Main Street signed off in October. He signed his permission in October. The school, again, I thought Jim Kreidler was going to arrange a meeting with the school. Am I remembering that correctly, Chaz? Or?
He was supposed to arrange it for the school, yes.
Oh, really? Oh, I didn't hear about that. Okay.
So, well, we've discussed it before. So, um, so no movement there, no movement on BOS. And what is, remind me again, what's the fourth parcel?
Um, what do we have?
It's here, because I'm, I mean, I've, certainly, not with town. And who is, every time during this document, they refer to they met with the town contact. Who's the town contact?
Me.
Okay.
Beth Bakken, yeah. We had Zoom meetings, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Updates.
When you do, when you do that again, would you mind letting me know?
Oh, sure.
When, when that occurs, and I'm happy to try to join in and understand just where we are. The gist of what I got here was that in the, I'm not sure how much more they're going to want from us regarding the preparation of this, because this document and the acceptance has to go before a town meeting.
Right.
Okay? So that means all of this, nothing starts on this until the town accepts it, the fact that we want to go into the 43D study.
Yep.
Period. Okay? So once that happens and the town agrees, then the 120-day process begins. And then you have, within that 180-day process, which is the speeding up of the permitting process. Okay? So once you have everybody on board, and once the town accepts it, the state then looks at the four feasibility studies, and according to this, the state is the one that makes the decision of which property moves forward.
Right.
Am I correct?
That's right. That's why the maps were prepared the way they were. MRPC was working to, basically, have those inserted in the application in a format that the state would expect to see.
Okay, okay. So, um, so that's basically it. We need to get this ready for town meeting, and hopefully it gets accepted so that we can be part of the study. Otherwise, we're nowhere to this point.
Right.
So do we have a date for town meeting?
No, I don't. Does anybody have it?
I heard May. Let me see if I have it in my book here. I do not. According to the charter, we're supposed to have it in May. And I know that they discussed it. I don't know if they came up with a date in the last BOS meeting.
Well, of course, it didn't happen last year because of COVID. But Beth, could you, um, take the lead now? I know that you have, you know, you had some big projects that you had to get done. But to remind the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
They are in charge of signing off on the Dudley Road property.
On Dudley Road, or this, yeah. Wait a minute.
Dudley Road.
Okay.
And the Atwood property. And then also that we need a connection to, come before, I don't know who, the school committee?
For Squanah Cook? Yeah.
Regarding Squanah Cook.
Okay, so school committee for Squanah.
And then, for whatever reason, I always have a block to that fourth property until...
Squanah Cook, Dudley Road, something, custom cabinets? No.
No.
Central Plaza.
Central Plaza's 222, that we already have signed.
Yeah, so I have something, that's what I have. Maybe I have an older, an older...
Well, we had four, and, you know, like, this is a lot to read, too. And I didn't get to every word after the, after the Dudley Road property, one with all their, what they're saying are restrictions on it.
Did we mention, is the, are the four properties mentioned in the final report, or no?
Oh, God.
I don't know if they are.
See if there's some provisions. Okay, the last page is more or less having to do with the town meeting.
Okay, yeah.
And the second. Just small parcels, environmental concerns. I don't know what the, there's some widgets.
Why don't we sort of come back, come back to this?
Yeah, okay. I'm going to look at it.
Yeah. We'll come back to this in our work session, because we have Courtney here, that is from the Townsend Housing Authority, that sort of gave us an update on the pocket neighborhoods, cottage housing, and small housing developments. How are you, Courtney?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Good. I was planning to just share your presentation with the team. If you could just, please tell me when you want me to advance the slide, I will advance it for you, Courtney, okay?
Sounds good. So, yeah, if you want to get that up, just, this is a presentation that I gave to the Housing Authority about a year, because maybe a little over a year ago, when we started just talking a little bit about out-of-the-box options for housing. And this is something that I had come across a while back. It's just an interesting concept for a different type of development in town, so pocket neighborhoods. So if you want to go to the next slide. So in general, the idea around pocket neighborhoods is that it's a small-scale neighborhood with groups of houses. They're typically clustered around a shared open space. You can see in the plan here that, you know, these are kind of clustered around a large center green space, but still have individual private yards on one side of a house or another. They're typically kept to about eight to 12 households. And a big piece of it is to kind of foster a sense of community within the actual neighborhood, which I think is a big part of sometimes to think what people are missing in some other developments, is that kind of sense of community. And so their goal is also to promote that. There are typically, the materials of the houses are typically similar, but still want to maintain individuality between units. They don't want it to be exactly the same in every case. So maintaining the kind of identity of the people that live there still with a little bit of variation. And then the idea of these kind of layered personal spaces, like I said, kind of a shared yard, private yards, different things like that. So if you want to go ahead, so, you know, what's nice about these is they can be scalable, right? You can take eight, different types of eight to 12 units and kind of cluster them. You can see that here in this plan where they have kind of a, on the south here, they have kind of a larger area, and then to the north, they have a kind of additional cluster up here. The other nice thing that you can see again in this plan is that they've kind of grouped garages and things. So you're keeping cars, you know, out of the pedestrian space, which is, you know, giving people a kind of a sense of being able to walk without, without worrying about cars around in the main spaces. So typically, they also have front porches that are kind of facing each other, again, fostering that sense of community. Careful placement of windows, because these are typically tighter developments, and we want to make sure that, you know, everybody does have a sense of privacy. So users typically are singles or couples, empty nesters. There are some with, you know, families, and probably anybody that's looking to do communities. The other things you're going to find when you look up these are, they're also called cottage housing and residential cluster developments, just in terms of if you're ever looking for, like, a zoning in there, sometimes we see them as different names. If you want to go ahead. So what I did for here is I have a couple of examples. One of, you know, some of these are less, you know, this one's more of an urban and one's a little more rural, but there's a few things that I really like about them. So this one here is actually a veterans' community down in New Orleans. So this one was built, I think, if you go to the next slide, I think it was not that long ago. And it kind of shows a nice, kind of, aerial shot. Yep, if you can go ahead. Yeah, perfect. So 2018. So, again, there's 58 units in this particular development. It's a 5.5-acre site. This, this one is, I like it because it is just a little bit different type of housing. It is more urban, like I said. So if you go ahead one more slide, you can start to see how this is laid out, and you can see they're kind of clustered on the edge with a central community space in this case. If you go ahead, these are a little more architect or nerdy, but what's really nice about this, in the top left, you can kind of see that they actually phased this development in this case. So opportunity to kind of do, you know, plan for a larger development, but, you know, build it out in the phases, which is really nice. They were trying to preserve some of the trees on site and some of the other open spaces. On the left side of the sheet, you can see these units are actually two units in one kind of house, and then this is kind of how the inside of those, those look, so.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I'm, I can, I can rush through. I'm good. So if you go to the next one, this one, so that's kind of the end of it, just showing one of the kind of open spaces there. These ones were meant for singles and some, some units for families. So there, there were like two to three family units, or two or three bedroom units in these as well, which, so it's kind of showing you some different scales that can happen. So if you go ahead. So this one here is actually in Concord, which is what is nice about this one. This is a local example, Concord Riverwalk. So if you go one more. So this one is a relatively small site. It's a 3.7-acre site with 12 units on it. They actually preserved 1.8 acres for open space in this particular one. It does have a centralized septic, which I think is important to making, you know, this type of community work here. This particular one did have public water, and they were all planned to be high-performance homes. So this site, the kind of two buildings that you see off of Main Street all the way to the right side, those are actually existing houses. So this parcel was bought with those two houses on it. Those two units were rehabbed, and the other ones were built. There you go. So I think one of the things you could see there, too, is they had a community guard in this one. So again, in this particular development, they had a few different unit sizes planned, so some three beds, some two beds. Like I said, some are renovation, some were new construction. And with, with this, they had kind of that central open space in the middle. They had this very, I, what I like about these so much is you can kind of see that, you know, similar architectural features, but, you know, a little bit of individuality throughout the whole, the whole thing. If you could maybe go to the, there we go.
Did I click too many?
No, that's all right. This is perfect. So, like I said, what's nice about this one, too, is it's all allowed to, the installation of PV and solar hot water panels. And so all of these homes are electric to avoid any fossil fuels, and they're all kind of monitored so that they could understand how this community was performing. And you can see the inside of one of these houses in particular here. But I just think this is a really nice, you know, local example, like I said, of one of these communities. So if you go ahead. So this is the Cottage Housing Development Code. This is what's kind of started this movement here in the US, and this is a zoning code. It's came about in Washington, particularly because there's an architect up there in Washington that kind of has promoted and fostered this type of community there. So they're the ones that really, you know, brought this, this community housing to the US. It's pretty popular in Europe. I think I'm, I just lost a bit of the screen. I don't know if, there we go. Perfect. So in their particular code, they typically have one- to-two-bedroom homes that are less than 975 square feet. That said, with every community that you look at, they're a little bit different. But this is the typical zoning that we're seeing. So if you go to the next slide. The other thing that's in this is, this code from Washington, again, says four to 12 units. It's very kind of funky in some of their things, like, basically, they're saying half of them can't be more than 800 square feet, and the other half, basically, are two stories and only can have this much on one story and this much on the other. So they're very prescriptive about how much area you're kind of allowed to have in these. They're, again, saying that it must be next to a common area and allow a certain amount of parking spaces per each unit. They all have a kind of public hearing and a design review built into these particular zoning codes. So the ones here in Mass, I found, I found some in North Hampton and Concord, again, and there are a couple others, and they're all very similar around this idea, but all, again, have a public hearing and some type of a board-approved process to make it happen. And I think that's, that's what I've got for you today. I know that was really fast, so if you guys have any questions. I also have a really great book here on cottage developments. If anybody's ever interested and wants to take a look at it, just let me know, and I can let you borrow it for a little while.
Gosh, that was, I really liked that.
Yeah, it's a really fun opportunity, I think, for something a little bit different, but not a full, large development that's, you know, a large multifamily unit.
So these, Courtney, if I can ask a couple of questions. These, and part of the reason why I wanted you to bring this to the Planning Board is that, that one, that was 3.7 acres, and that was 12 units on that? Do you know off the top of your head what the septic was for that?
I don't know. I know that it is a shared septic. I can look, I can probably find out for you about how big that particular septic was. But you saw in there as well that, you know, they preserved, you know, you know, 1.8 acres of that site, and were still able to get in septic and 12 units.
Right.
So, yeah, it's a pretty dense little community.
Right. So that's, that's kind of what I was, Lance, that I wanted you guys to see, is that there are options out there for, you know, a three, three to four to five acres that would fit into what we were, what we're discussing as far as the age-restricted housing.
Yeah. I mean, I really liked that. This was very, very informative, Courtney.
Good.
Now, what, what, what is the Housing Authority planning to do with this in terms of pushing it forward, or what have you?
This is part of our ongoing discussion on, on what we want to do out at Dudley Road.
Okay.
You know, the, we're looking at all options, and we're talking with the state, Sheila, Sheila Harrington, and what we can do, because funding is going to be very, very important for us in the, in the housing end of it. So, but I also thought that, you know, this would dovetail really well with what we're looking at here, with some of our, our planning here.
Okay. Yeah. It was, this is excellent. I really enjoyed it. Thank you so much, Courtney.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, we're, we're not quite at 7:00, so let me wait until 7:00 before we open up our So do you pronounce your name Shayna?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. It's 7:00 with Verizon time, so I think I'm going to get going here. So I'd like to open up the public hearing for 60 Warren Road. So I'd like to open up the public hearing for 60 Warren Road. So why doesn't everyone introduce themselves? Let's start with Chaz.
Chaz Sexton, Duranian, Clark.
Carol.
Carol Hofstas, member.
Jerelyn.
Jerelyn Mazakis, member.
Lori.
Laura Schiffern, vice chair.
And Lance McNally, chair. So typically we have a public sign in sheet going, but Beth is very accomplished in terms of recording everyone that is part of the Zoom video, so that will serve as our public sign in sheet. Let me start off by reading the, the legal ad that was posted in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 11, the Townsend Zoning Bylaw, Section 145-42, Site Plan Review Special Permit, Section 145-65 Special Permits, and Section 145-51 Telecommunications and Cellular Towers. The Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday, January the 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM regarding an application from Shayna Al Galat, help me.
Gallinott.
All right. Industrial Communications and Electronics Incorporated to renew a special permit for an existing cell tower located at 16 Warren Road, assessors map 32 blocks 18 and 19, Lot Zero, Zone Residential RA3. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GIC 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. You may attend the virtual public hearing on Zoom at, and I'm not going to read the URL or the meeting ID or the password. The application is available for review on request by emailing Beth Faxon or calling the town number for an appointment to review materials at 272 Main Street, Townsend, Mass. Any questions on the reading of the legal notice? All right. Lori's probably going to kill me, but Lori, you're going to like this. So I am going to recuse myself from this public hearing. And the reason I'm going to recuse myself is I am the president of the South Fitchburg Sportsman's Club. And the South Fitchburg Sportsman's Club does get compensation in terms of release from our property taxes through the cell phone tower. And so I don't think it's appropriate that I, you know, with that conflict, since there's a full board here tonight, I should recuse myself. And so Lori, if you could just take it from here. And I know you would love the advance warning I gave you, Lori.
Yeah, that was terrific.
Sorry.
Shayna, would you like to present your?
Yes, please, I would, thanks. Hi, I'm Shayna Gallinott from Industrial Communications. I am corporate staff attorney here and with me is Kevin Delaney. He's our engineering and regulatory compliance manager. We're just here tonight to renew our special permit that was, it was originally issued back in 2001 and we've renewed it two times since then, most recently in 2011. At that time, it was renewed for seven years due to an Economic Development Reorganization Act that was going on during that time. In 2012, it was renewed for two additional years, so that's why we weren't here until right now. Our current permit is set to expire on January 29th, so we're just looking to renew for another five years. And I've been working with Beth on putting the application together. Hi, Beth, nice to virtually meet you.
You too.
So, you know, we're here to answer any questions that you might have about the renewal of the permit and we've enjoyed working with the town so far and hope to continue the relationship.
Are there any board members that have questions for Shayna?
I do not.
If I could just ask, would there be any reason why we would not grant the permit? What would be the downside to the town for us not to grant the permit?
Are you asking me?
Yes, Shayna.
Oh. Well, right now, the fire department is on the tower. So your emergency services are currently using our space at no fee to them. So that's definitely a benefit that the town is currently.
Okay, I understand. I, I'm not seeing any reason why you wouldn't be granted the permit, which is why I'm just putting the question out there. Engineer Kevin, do you have any comments for the board?
I was just going to add, Lori, that the town does have, and this is me talking as a citizen, not a board member, the town does have, the fire department does have equipment on that tower that provides for the, you know, health and safety of our residents.
Yeah, Shayna, yeah, I got that. I think Shayna just said that.
All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you, though.
Okay, I don't have the little script with me in front of me.
So read mandatory referrals.
And that would be Chaz, right, Jim?
Yes.
Chaz, do you have mandatory referrals, please?
I am looking.
Thank you.
We're all kind of caught here.
Yeah, and then the next thing, Lori, is going to be read any written correspondence received from abutters or concerned citizens.
It's in a file called comments, mandatory referral comments.
On, okay, then I'm, I see, i- is it under correspondence?
Nope. You go to the 7:00 PM, it says 60 Warren Road Cell Tower folder, and you click on the folder, and then you'll see something in a document in there that says 60 Warren Road referral comments. It's a PDF.
Yep.
And then click on that and you should have, it starts, Building Inspector.
Okay, received on December 29th, 2020 from the Building Inspector. The comments are the building department has no objections to this renewal application. There was an open building permit for repairs to the tower that is, that was issued recently. And that was signed Eric Chartren, Commissioner. We've received a referral notice from the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Cal moved to thank the planning board for the referral and note that the Board of Selectmen considered it a positive for the police fire to have the ability to install their antennas on the tower. Mr. Wyler, Wyler seconded the motion.
Mr. Miller.
Oh, Mr. Miller. And then we received something from Board of Health. That is no comment. That was on, also on December 29th. On December 30th, from James Smith, which is the Highway Department, no comment. We've received an email on, on December 29th from Mark Boynton, that's the fire chief. It says, we currently have public safety equipment on this tower, probably a good idea to look at the language and make sure we are all set moving forward. We have been, they have been great to, to work with. The next one is the Water Department, received on December 29th. Am I missing something, Beth? I don't see a comment on that at all.
Just says the Water Department has no issues with the project.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yep. The Water Department has no issues with the project at 60 Warren Road. And the Housing Authority has no comment, and that was on 125. And those are all the referrals.
That's it, yeah.
Hey, thank you, Chaz, for doing that. And Lance, am I at the part now where I can call for a motion on this?
I think we first of all should read any written correspondence received from abutters or concerned, concerned citizens or put in the record that we received none.
Okay, Chaz, can you answer that question regarding?
There was nothing from a butters.
Yeah, I don't have anything here.
Okay. Does that satisfy you, Lance?
As a citizen, yes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I will entertain a motion to re, the renewal of this permit if the board so pleases.
I make a motion to approve the renewal application for the cell tower on 60 Warren Road.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Jerelyn?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
And we know that Lance is abstaining. Laura Schiffern, aye, yes. Okay, congratulations. Thank you Shayna and Kevin for attending.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And then we should officially close the public hearing.
Do you have any conditions on the permit? What do you want for a decision, I guess?
I thought it was the renewal of the same permit.
Okay, so no additional conditions or just the actual, you have no changes?
Well, with no derogatory comments from, or referrals.
Okay.
And then no comments from any abutters, no objections, I would say that it would be able to continue as it was.
So would you like the same decision as was issued originally for this permit? Or did you want to, would you like me to draft a decision and finalize it?
Whatever the pleasure is of the board, I don't see a reason for making any changes if everything is the same and the, and it's, this is a renewal of the same action.
Madam Chair, may I suggest to you that the same type of decision be written that was written in 2011, the last time that we renewed the permit? It was just a simple renewal of the special permit that gets filed with the clerk and then after the 20 days recorded at the registry of deeds. The, the conditions from the original decision would run with the property.
Okay. And that's what I think. And, and thank you, Counselor, for making that point. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we ready to adjourn the public hearing at 7:13?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, Carol?
Yes.
Jerelyn?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. And Lance is abstaining. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Lori, and I apologize for not calling you and warning you ahead of time.
Always do this, Lance.
I know.
But you know what? I can, I can live through it. It's okay.
All right. All right, so we're at 7:13 and our, our public hearing for 152 North End Road is not till 7:30. So, all right, so going back to 3.6 in terms of the Chapter 43D feasibility study.
Okay. Mary Beth, not Mary Beth, I'm sorry, I have something else on the mind here. Beth, so in the document, and, and I'm pretty sure that I, I can remember what I had recommended as the fourth one, because apparently through this document, they tell us that five other properties were considered, but then eliminated. Okay?
Yeah.
So then there's another property parcel 18-7-0. If you could look that up for me, please, because, and I, I'd like to make this comment about this report so that hopefully they can fix it.
1820-0, did you say?
187-0.
187-0.
So unlike the other parcels that they have, they talk about, they tell us what the parcel is. They give us the map lot, block, and then say 222 Main Street, Central Plaza, you know, they tell us that it's a Squanacook School, it's 66 Brookline. They tell us that it's the map parcel, whatever, town owned parcel on Dudley Road. On this one, they just say another property parcel 18-7 was nominated for the study. After investigating the property and adding it to the matrix, MRPC staff deemed it to be a great candidate for inclusion in Chapter 43D application because it contains an, an underutilized building that is practically 50,000 square feet. Now, is that Turnpike Road? Is that the industrial parcel?
I am not sure. I would have to look that up.
Okay, so that's the fourth parcel that they mentioned, and, and that's the extent of the recommended properties.
I thought that we were looking, that the board looked at 355 Main Street too, but I don't see that in the matrix.
355 Main Street?
365 Main Street.
What is it?
Yeah, the.
Is that the old, like, is, is it, I want, I don't want to say saddle shop, but?
It's vacant right now. It's an industrial, is it the cabinet place? No.
Oh, no, it can't be.
It's.
No, that can't be. I, I can look up an address, I just can't look up a map, and I, I don't have the map block, lot thing.
Is that where the old gas station was?
No, 365, no. It's actually a building for, it looks like there was a business in there, but I don't know exactly what, I can't.
Okay, just, just, okay, give me a minute. What did you say was 365?
Main.
Was it 365 or 355?
Well, whatever the industrial building is there across from Townsend Ford or something, is it?
Oh, Townsend Ford?
Across from Townsend Ford.
More close to it, yeah.
No, Kevin Smith here. How are you?
Hey, Kevin.
365, that would be the CN Cabinets building.
Oh, it is, okay.
That's CN Cabinets building, used to be the old Bates Box building, the.
Across from Schulte's building?
Before that, across from the bus bound.
Okay. Okay, all righty.
That was another one that was up for consideration. I don't know if that mapped.
That building is for sale. The building is for sale, it's for sale.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, what I'm saying to you is that yes, that property is what they allowed to be included as the fourth property.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering now with, who's got it for sale, Kevin?
Oh my God, a big realty outfit. I know the owner, Marvin. They, it was the Realtor guy called me, wanted to know if he was, would be interested in it. And I respectfully declined because I had talked to Marvin before the Realtor even got involved.
Okay, so this is a, Kevin, this is a story. If you can, it has been included in this report from MRPC?
I just got on, I just got on, Lori, can you bring me up to speed on that?
Okay, so this is the, the Planning Board is recommending that we go into a 43D study, which is a expedited permitting process. It's grant money from the state. The state decides on which property, after the proposals, which property the town can go into a study, the study on. So right now we have.
Be used for what?
For development. This is grant money that's there to develop a property in Townsend.
It's existing.
That's existing, yes.
Okay.
Well, well, not, not exactly existing because one of the properties we're, we're throwing in is the Dudley Road property. The property that was, we were trying to get veteran housing on. So that is, that's in as one of the.
One of the parcels.
Yeah. So, so I've been taxed with getting the signatures of the owner. So one of the owners is the town for Dudley Road. The other one is the school for Squanacook. The other one is the owner of 222 Main Street, which has already signed. The other one is the owner of 222 Main Street, which has already signed permission.
222, that's Robert, that's the, uh, that's the central mall.
Yeah.
Okay, I know him very well.
Yeah, that was for, um, trying to develop a mixed use in there, Kevin.
He came to me and asked me about that. I sent him to the town.
No, I, I told him about it.
You, you got a hold of him?
Oh yeah, I told him about the study. Yeah, so anyway, he signed. So the last, the fourth person is this person that you know.
Marvin, yeah.
Marvin, so can you send me his contact so I could have a conversation with him and send him the documents? To see, because we can't have him on the list if he's not agreeable. In other words, it can't go forward without his agree, agreeing to it, just like the town, just like the school committee and just like Robert, you know, for 222 Main Street.
I'll do it after I, after I get done, uh.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that because that will save some legwork on Beth's part.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely the parcel ID 1870, so we got that cleared up.
Yeah.
There's some land that goes with that piece too.
Yep, it's a good sized parcel.
Yeah, there's two accesses to it.
Yeah.
So, so it will be up to, um, Marvin would have to agree for us to be able to bring that parcel into this plan, which gets presented to the town. And once the town approves the plan, then it goes to the state. The state decides on which parcel will be in the study.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome Lori.
All right, anything else on the 43D visibility study update? Okay, um, Charles, 3.7, safe routes to school update.
We had, uh, we, meaning, uh, I met with Rachel from Safe Routes to School. And I also met with Veronica Cal in regards to this. We have buy-in from the police, we have buy-in from the fire department, we have buy-in from, um, the planning board. We're still waiting on the school. Uh, we have, um, uh, submitted, um, we actually, I got a, an email from Rob, uh, from the school committee. And he pointed me to the individual that has agreed that she's going to talk with us so that we'll be able to at least talk with the school committee. But we, um, have sent out, Rachel had sent out, Beth, I don't know if you were, were you attached to that, uh, email that was sent out? Uh, because Rachel sent out an email to the principals of both the schools explaining that, you know, we're all ready to go, we just need final approval from, um, from the schools and we need notification of that.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
Okay, I'm going to add, I'll forward that to you, okay?
Sure, thank you, I'll keep a lookout.
Okay, and, um, you know, at this point, we're waiting for the schools to, to, to buy in. Once we get that buy in, then I'll have more information. But, uh, Rachel and Veronica and I, um, have talked about the other, uh, issues that we have going on or the other plans that we have going on, um, with the other grants that you guys have been talking with, that, that Beth and Veronica have been working on. We're thinking Safe Routes to School is going to be able to tie in with a lot of that as well. So, you know, I, we're trying to move this as, as forward as quickly as possible so that we don't lose out. So that we can use the, you know, that information for the grants that are, that are upcoming to, to write for some of the things that you guys get going in the works.
Yes, do you think you could, um?
This thing won't, it'll have to wait till 7:30, remember last time? This is something else.
Excuse me, Chaz?
Yeah.
And, and Beth, is that something that you think maybe I could piggyback on? With the 43D, since I have to talk to the school committee? Go inside that?
It's the principals. It's the principals or the superintendent that we need buy in from.
Okay, and the 43D thing would have to be a full committee, right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
But it's a good idea though Lori.
I tried.
All right, um, all right, anything else Chaz on, on the safe routes to school? Thanks, it looks like we're making some good progress. 3.8, Beth, Unified Planning Work Program Grant, Townsend Walkability Study.
Yeah, I received an email from Sheri Bean today, um, and she is interested in, you know, basically, uh, the definition of the study area. There are two general areas that were discussed, um, from the common up to the north point of the public safety complex. And the other area was from the town common out west, I'm sorry, eastwards, the high school. So at this point, um, there's been no forward movement, uh, regarding selecting that, uh, study area.
All right, um. Someone's, uh, getting some talking in here. If someone could please mute whoever that is.
IRCCO? I don't know who that is. IRCCO?
Well, um, all right, so first of all, we need to determine who is IRCCO? Does anyone know?
I don't know.
Me.
Well, what's, what's your name?
Leo.
Leo?
Carmian.
Did you get that Beth?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Um, I can probably, let's see, I think in three minutes I can do the budget. So we have to have a budget submitted by February the 5th. So I spoke to Beth on the budget, um, and, um, you know, she's going to basically look at what our budget was for last year, compare that to actually what we spent, and then devise a new budget, you know, to make sure that we have training in that for, you know, personal development for, uh, the planning board, to make sure that, um, moving forward with any sort of electronic automation, we can have that. And unfortunately, unless you, um, want to have another planning board meeting between now and the 5th, if it's, if you're all, I've told Beth that I'd be more than happy to review with it, go over it with her one-on-one. If the board gives me that permission or if someone else wants to go over it one-on-one with Beth, that might be the best way to move forward as opposed to scheduling another planning board meeting just to go over the budget. But I'm up to whatever someone wants to do.
Do you want a motion on that Lance?
Sure.
I make a motion that we, um, nominate the chair to work with the budget with the administrator for the planning board for 2022.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor Chaz?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerelyn?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that would work out, uh, is that okay with you Beth?
Absolutely.
All right, um, all right, so we're approaching 7:30, um, gosh, I think I have a minute left on my Verizon time. I see Stan Dillis that you're in your, um, your Lunenburg office?
I am, yes I am.
They haven't gone live on Vittin Pond yet with, with your internet connection?
No, it's, it's live, it went live last week, but it's, uh, it's still close, it's a little more convenient for me to do it here. I can have two screens open, I can have the plan up on the screen and.
Okay.
I can switch back and forth if I need to answer questions, so.
Okay. All right, um, I show at 7:30, so I'd like to open up, uh, or continue the public hearing on 152 North End Road. Um, there's a sign-in sheet circulating, so I think we have all the board members. And, um, along with smiling Stan Dillis, Kevin Smith, and, um, IRCCO. Okay, um, with that, um, is there anything that you wanted to have presented Stan?
Um, I think I'll let Kevin, uh, present this. He's, I, I do the plan, but he knows more of the particulars than I do.
Okay.
He'd like me to tell you what I found there, but I'll defer to Kevin for the moment.
All right, Kevin, do you want me to project, uh, the plan that, um, Stan prepared?
Yeah, for some reason I don't have a copy of it, but I got something, uh, close enough. I've got mine.
Well, you can just, uh, if I were you, I would just, you know, subtract that from his fee.
No, I, for some, for some reason my office, uh, didn't get it printed for me.
Okay.
No worries, I'm pretty familiar with it.
I'll project it.
Okay.
All right, we just had someone with HP, which I'm sure is not here, look Packard. Join the public hearing?
Hi.
Okay.
Would the eight, uh, person with the screen name HP identify themselves for our sign-in sheet? HP?
I'll just, I'll write him as HP, that's fine.
All right. Hold on one second, um, I was going to put the, the plan up, um. Oh, there it is. Does everyone see that?
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Okay Kevin?
That looks like, that looks like the one. We had to, uh, had that plan to it, uh, my sketch wasn't quite, uh, formal enough, but that looks like it pretty much covers the existing conditions of spaces. And Stanley added a handicapped, clarified a handicapped, uh, spot in there. It, uh, pretty much is what it is. There's ample parking, uh, drainage is not an issue. Obviously, the site distance is not an issue in the street. And I think I've answered, we answered everything that we, I think there was required of us. Other than that, it pretty much is what it is on that one Lance.
Okay, um, what is the size of the existing building?
It's, uh, 40 by 50, 2,000 square feet.
Okay, um. All right, um, Stan, does, do we have enough parking spots for, what is it now, 20 by 40?
It's, uh, 40 by, I guess 40 by 50, I thought it was 40 by 48.
Okay, so, um, is that, I have to go look at the bylaw, um, or someone can help me here, is that?
40 by 48, I'm sorry, 40 by 48.
Okay, because on the, on your hand sketch it was 24 by 48.
No, it says for, uh, the existing building 40 by 50. On my hand sketch plan to you, I'm looking at that one.
Yeah.
Right in the building block itself.
Okay.
Existing building 40 by 50.
All right, hold on a second.
That's the, that's the plan that I drew that I gave to Beth. And she made copies of it because I have it, I'm looking at it.
Okay, um, all right, so that's, um, 2,000 square foot. All right, I've got a, I just got to check really quick on the bylaws, um.
Well, Eric Shertrun said it's 180 times the floor space. That's the basis.
Uh, can't be, it can't be times.
It'd be, it's divided by.
Oh. Well, he wrote 180 times the floor.
Okay, so that means, uh, how many parking spots do we have?
16.
Okay, so you need to have 12.
Right, and I believe that's what Eric had said in a previous letter, that we needed 12 parking spaces. I thought he said 14, but. So we have 16, uh, you know, they're not, none of the, none of the spaces are striped because the surface doesn't lend itself to painting.
Yep.
Those spaces that are laid out are a standard sized parking space with a standard sized driving aisle between them, so.
Okay.
They all fit per, per specific parking.
Are, are you seeking any waivers?
Myself, Lance, you're talking to me?
Uh, you were Stan.
Not, not that I'm aware of.
All right, so I, all right, I believe, um, the, um, that we require, uh, those spots to be paved. Um, unless the planning board basically, if you want to waive the requirement for having them paved.
I would like to, I would like to waive the requirement to have it paved. It's, it's recycled asphalt. Currently, it works fine, there's no dust, it, it looks, uh, old. I'm trying to keep the building dated to ma, make it look old. I'm not trying to make something look like it's, uh, a, you know, modern building. Obviously, you've probably been by it Lance.
Yeah, on my way to the liquor store, of course.
Yeah, okay, and to visit your daughter.
Yeah.
You know, nonetheless, I, I would, I would like to ask for a variance or a waiver.
All right.
For that.
Can I, uh, any, any discussion from any board members on that? If not, can I have a motion to approve the waiver of, of putting hardtop there?
I make a motion to waive the, um, the installation of hardtop there.
I second that.
Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jerelyn?
Yes.
Lance, yes. All right, one, um, other question, either Stan or Kevin. So for the, um, let me just call it, what, uh, recycled asphalt?
Correct.
Is that coming, is that, is that asphalt been, um, fired? In other words, like through, um, keating or someone? And why I say that, it, I just want to know the source of the material because unless it's been put through a, a fire process, which they typically do, it could have contaminants in it.
No, it's, it has, it's 100% recycled safe.
Okay, so, okay, and, and so you're purchasing that from someone?
We, I did purchase it, it's already in there. Everything that's there is there.
Okay. The other question I have is, what are the hours of operation?
Uh, nine to, nine to six. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
All right, so is it fair to say that, um, that it's between sunrise and sunset?
Correct.
All right, so that there's no need from a safety standpoint for exterior lighting?
No, but we have them.
Okay. Well, I don't see any on the plan, at least unless I'm looking.
Oh no, it's just existing and they're on the building.
Okay.
Yeah, they're attached to the building. They're attached to the building.
Okay, um, I guess the, I mean, that's all the questions I have. Are there any other questions from any other board members?
No, I do want to point out that on one of the mandatory referrals, um, the, um, they agreed that the driveway had been an existing driveway, so there's no need for a permit and that the drainage all looks good according to the highway superintendent.
Yeah, and I actually spoke to Eric, the building inspector, and given that there's no hardtop there, um, he's not concerned with, um, drainage.
Yep.
And it, and it does slope away from North End Roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, it, it has, uh, existing drainage swales that are along the side of the building that the water's always traveled and it's never been a, a problem with erosion or anything else. It's, you know, it just kind of free flows, but it, everything flows off the road.
Okay. Are there any comments from any butters? Written or people that are present in this meeting?
I do not see any.
If there is, I'm not aware of any Lance, I, you know.
Okay.
Friends and family, everybody here in the neighborhood.
All right, um, then I guess the last question that I have, um, before we take action on that, are there any board members that, um, would like to do a site walk before, um, approving the site plan?
Um, speaking for myself, I've already done a site walk on my own, so I, I understand the property, I know exactly what's there, so I'm okay with that.
Carol?
Uh, I've actually driven by, my daughter lives right down the street from there, so I've driven by it several times, so I know exactly what it looks like.
Okay, Geraldine?
I've gone by it numerous times, so.
All right, Laura?
I've been by it.
Okay. Um, all right, so, let's see, as far as, uh, I think that, um, probably put a motion together to approve the site plan. I think probably the two, um, that we should note, Beth, that, um, the planning board granted a waiver for, for not hardtop, and that the, um, um, conditions of operation are between sunrise and sunset. Um, yep. Um, and with, with that, um, entertain a motion to, um, to approve the site plan, um, based on those conditions?
I make a motion that we approve the application for 152 North End Road, um, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. Okay, um, with that, um, I make a recommendation that we close the public hearing, so can we have a, um, motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just, I want to just make one clarification, so that there's no, um, problems in the future.
Yes.
So, sunrise to sunset, but what about, you know, like, the winter months, like, um, you know, like the holiday seasons where he might have business with people who are coming in after sundown, you know?
Good point, thank you.
He's got lights on the buildings, are we going to make any other restrictions? I'm, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the, I mean, the sunrise to sunset might work in, in the summer, you know?
Most of the time, correct.
Spring or summer, maybe early fall, but it would certainly kill it in the winter months, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with doing that to a, to a business.
Okay, I was, I was thinking, Kevin, your, your hours, when I asked you, I thought was like 6:00 PM.
Well, that's traditionally how it's been, uh, you know, nine to six in that area, but like, you know, it's like Lori mentioned a, a valid point, you know, you get to the time of the year when it gets dark at four o'clock in the afternoon, um, you know, you, I agree, uh, and I thank you, Lori, for bringing that up.
Kevin, are you planning on selling Christmas trees there?
Well, I don't, I don't know.
You might, so if you, if you plan on that, you might, I agree, uh, you know, in the winter, four o'clock or sunsets, four, 15, that might be, that might be too early, especially on the weekends for people to, people might want to get a tree.
All right, so given, all right, so given that the building does
Know that to be the case, but.
Given that the building does have external lighting, then, um, I think that we should revise our conditions to be, um, uh, we grant a waiver from the hardtop, um, and that, um, I don't think we have any conditions, correct? All right, so can I have a motion to, um, grant, uh, well, we already, to, to grant the site plan review, to approve it?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, all in, uh, Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. Okay, so with that, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
45.
All right, Geraldine, we're going to give to Geraldine there first, and second?
Second, 7:45.
All right.
But I can say three times if you like.
All right, Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. Okay, um, so let me get back.
I'd like to thank the board for, uh, uh, helping us through this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Yep, and.
All right, this is being a quicker night than what I thought it was going to be. All right, I think we have one last item, and I call that 3. A, which is a ZBA mandatorial referral. Beth?
Uh, that should be in the folder, the shared folder. Um, see if I can direct you guys there. 59 West Meadow Road.
So, so, um, so this is, um, going to the ZBA, uh, for, um, a permit to, for earth removal?
Yes, and it'll be also there applying for a stormwater management permit with the planning board. Um, so the public hearing with the planning board is on the 8th of February, and the public hearing with the zoning board of appeals is on the 10th, um, so.
And have we, had we received that stormwater permit?
No, the, that, that's under your purview, under your review, the stormwater permit application. Oh, yeah, you should have gotten that already.
Okay.
I sent that to you guys. I also sent you the mandatory referral, but I did put it in the share folder, too.
All right.
So, I don't know if you've reviewed it.
Um, no, I have not. Um, has, um, so we typically would go ahead and hire a peer review engineer to review that stormwater report?
Right, but tonight, you're just offering a, your referral to the zoning board of appeals for their special permit application. So typically, what you would do is review the application that I send you and offer your comments to the zoning board of appeals on that referral form.
Where, where, Beth, where is that? Is that on the shared drive?
It should be in the shared folder, but I also emailed it to you about two weeks ago, so let me see where I put it. I think it's in here.
So Lance, for clarification, or Beth, um, we're going to have a public hearing on the same matter on the 8th?
On a different matter, um, the same project, different matter. So, um, the project is 50 West Meadow Road, and if, um, and Stan is still on the call, he can give you the background. I don't know if he's still on here. No? Okay.
Is this the one with Fish and Game?
Yes, part of it is going to fish, it's going to be sold to Fish and Game, exactly.
Right, okay.
So this is, um, it's mostly a cleanup before they're prepping it to sell.
To, to get, exactly, okay, now I know exactly what this is now, okay.
Well, it's really reduced, so you should have had, and now I can't find it, I apologize, but I did send the application out, there were a number of site plans. Um, basically, the work, the amount of work out there has been reduced pretty drastically to, I mean, just, the fish and, fish and wildlife would really like the property as is, so they're going to essentially move the trash off of there, do a little bit of moving stuff around, but to protect the habitat and to, to sell the property in a more attractive condition to the state, um, because there's protected species out there, they have minimized the work that's going to be done, but there's still, uh, enough work done to trigger both the earth excavation permit and the stormwater, um, although it's minimal work.
So our, our mandatory referral is just for what?
For the earth excavation permit, um, that the zoning board of appeals will be reviewing on the 10th.
Right.
And I, I can't find the email, but I, you know, I emailed it to you guys, so quite some time ago.
Yeah, I remember that now.
Yeah.
I don't have any comment on, on, I personally don't have any comment on it, I did review that.
Okay, great. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a lengthy application, it's probably 50 pages long.
Yeah, I think we, uh,
Depends on anyone's memory.
Yeah, I think that we'd probably like a lot of other mandatory referrals, no comment.
Yep, yep, let them work on it.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, Beth, do you want me to have a motion in terms of the planning board, uh, uh, mandatory referral, um, to the ZBA regarding West Meadow Road, is no comment?
Sure.
Do I have that?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Um, Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance, yes, okay. All right, 4.1, correspondence from other towns.
Uh, let's see. All right, Beth, this is where the UPWP project memo comes in?
Yeah, it, it's, it's on, actually, we have it on the agenda as notices from towns in other towns, when really, I put in that folder, general correspondence for the board. So whatever you see in that folder, if you want to, like, summarize, you know, the, the correspondence from town council, I don't know, yes, the invitation for the grants, things that are, that have come to the office, basically.
Okay, well, I'll start with Fitchburg City Council has a notice of public hearing that was on January 19th, um, for the Fitchburg Planning Board to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance, um, for phase two of an ordinance update, uh, for clarification, and we also had one from Town of Shirley. Um, this is for, um, a continuance of a public hearing, uh, for Monday, February 1st. Um, a, the applicant Metal Sex Land Holding LLC has submitted a comprehensive permit application for a 40B development, as well as an application for two variances in connection with section 3.3.2B, uh, and 3.3.2D of the Town of Shirley protective zoning bylaws. Um, this is on 42 Benjamin Road, Shirley, with a parcel ID of 33B4, uh, in the R2 district. Um, the, I didn't really get a chance to review town councils, um, zoning legislation, um, because as, as true to form for town council, it's quite, it's quite lengthy.
It's very lengthy, and, and
Yeah.
That would be very difficult, except, you know, they have some definitions that, um, they're proposing, and it's very lengthy.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I couldn't get through it all.
Yeah, I, I would say that if anybody's interested, that they can, they can, it is on the hard drive, um, under correspondence to 4.0 for this meeting, under correspondence.
If you want to read the memo, well, you can read the memo from town council, which is short, if you're interested.
Okay.
Or I could. In the same, in the same folder, actually.
Yeah, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for that, I got 16 things open at once here.
It might be quicker to just get it from the email. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, could you, could you read it, Lance?
Yeah, I will.
I can't, I can't get it open, it's, I have too many windows open right now.
Um, so this is from our deliver, our, our, from Adam. Dear municipal managers and planners, the governor recently signed into law an act enabling partnerships for growth. The new legislation includes notable amendments to G1C40A, AKA the zoning act. The attached advisory highlights these amendments. I note, uh, importantly, that the legislation changes the equation, no, the, changes the quantum of vote required for the adoption of certain types of amendments to local zoning bylaws and for approvals of certain types of special permits. As always, please do not hesitate to contact us with any questions. All right? So I think it's something important that we have to read.
Yeah, this is something that, if I remember correctly, um, the governor wanted to make some changes in regards to that, to increase housing in the state. And I think this is one of those changes that, that was talked about.
It'd be very interesting to go through it.
Yep.
Some of the terminology has changed, and, and so, it'll be excellent.
Okay.
If anybody reads it and has any questions, and, you know, just send them in, and I'll send them on to Adam.
Okay. Well, it's so good to see Geraldine, and I'm glad, Geraldine, that you're feeling so much better.
Oh, thank you.
So with that, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I have a second. All right, Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All right, and Lance, yes. I thought there for a second, everyone wanted to sit there and
I did, too, I was like, Geraldine, you usually read on top.
I can't make any more motions.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks.